We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on October 15th, 2024 to order at 3:01 PM. Welcome everyone to the Waco City Council Work Session. Welcome to those here in the gallery and the newly redecorated or refurbished gallery. We show the camera on our new seating arrangement. It looks great. Ashley, we see it back there. Cameras are back there. It looks beautiful. Here at 100 Washington and Downtown Waco, thanks everybody for being here. Welcome also to the viewers at home and watching on the Waco City Cable Channel. And we will start the meeting with a moment of silence. Okay, we'll start the first item on the order of business today is the hearing of vis-- or not hearing of visitors, work session speakers. We will recognize work session speakers. We do have a card here on work session. Anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda, please let us know. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, it looks like this, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more individuals present, please have those persons stand. At the beginning of your comments, you'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you are forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public disclosure is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meeting so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the Sergeant-at-Arms shall remove from the council meeting any person who while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting, anyone who makes personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, anyone who becomes boisterous, or anyone who makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, claps their hands, stomps feet, whistles yells, or makes similar demonstration. We have one card up here and it is Mr. Wiley Stem. So come on up to the podium, Mr. Stem, and when you get there, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Wiley Stem, 519 Sienna Bend Trail, McGregor, Texas, which is in the city limits of Waco. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Today, the city manager and staff are bringing you a work session item to discuss a source water protection program for Lake Waco and the Brazos River. I support this program and encourage the council to engage on this issue as it is the most important issue for the future of our city. In the Lake Waco watershed, the North Bosque River provides 75% of the water flow, 70% of the water flow that creates Waco's water supply, Lake Waco. Waco has other supplies of water, but none that can even come close to sustaining our needs. Lake Waco is the heart of our economic development future. It supports our culture and provides a recreational value many cities envy. I support the formation of the Source Water Protection Program because the North Bosque River is currently impaired due to excessive phosphorus. The bulk of this phosphorus comes from the dairy industry. Based on the current herd size in the North Bosque, the dairy industry generates over 3,000 tons of manure and wastewater every day. This waste, which is rich in phosphorus, is spread on fields and is subject to runoff. In storm events, the phosphorus is carried from these waste fields to streams and the river and downstream to Lake Waco. Excessive phosphorus can lead to poor water quality, algal blooms that create health issues and shorten the life of our lake, much less the impact it has on our water treatment systems, which is significant. Phosphorus loadings have been excessive in major storm events in recent years. Ironically, these storm events in the North Bosque are the key to keeping Lake Waco full and maintaining Waco's water rights. Currently, the industry has plans to increase their herd size in the next few years. Some operators are committed to responsible waste management as part of the expansions. However, Waco must ensure that waste management standards are upgraded and enforced to protect water quality and there is accountability for waste disposal, which is a big deal in our watershed. Otherwise, the existing proposed growth of operations will be a threat to water quality. The dairy industry must take the necessary steps to significantly reduce phosphorus loadings. Otherwise, the continuous buildup of phosphorus in thousands of acres will be an ongoing threat to the Bosque and Lake Waco. I commend the council and staff for their excellent water planning efforts over the last few years. I ask the mayor and council to continue this leadership and support the city staff to make the protection of Lake Waco the top priority for the future of our city. Former mayors and council members have successfully engaged state and federal regulators to protect our water supply. Make no mistake, this is a daunting task, made difficult by politics and bureaucratic complexities. Mayor Lynda Etheridge used to say, "This issue will take sustained vigilance to protect our water supply." Facing an army of Austin State Secretaries and bureaucrats in this very building in 2004, our new mayor, May Jackson politely looked them in the eye and chose Lake Waco by authorizing the staff to proceed with litigation that brought some protection for Lake Waco's future. Beware of politicians and bureaucrats that tell you they have this problem solved. Do not trust them. The city staff will need the full support and engagement of our elected officials to successfully take on this challenge. Again, thank you for your ongoing leadership.
Thank you, former city manager Stem. Appreciate it.
Y'all too. I'll leave you to that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak on a work session agenda item here today? There being none, we will now recess the regular session and convene into work session with a report from the city manager, city manager Ford.
Thanks, Mayor. Good afternoon to everybody. We've got no changes on the agenda today. I do want to make one, employee recognition though. We've got a new team member serving on city staff. It's our interim director at the Waco Regional Airport, Michael Reisman, who began in his role actually yesterday. Want to tell you a little bit about him. Michael, do you mind standing up? Thank you. A little bit about Michael. He previously has served at several airports around the country, most recently in Asheville Regional Airport in North Carolina for 14 years. He oversaw a variety of tasks and functions there related to airport operations, public safety, capital development, as well as strategic planning. Not only did he work in Asheville, he successfully spent time in Greeley, Colorado with their airport, as well as in Fort Worth, working for the Department of Aviation there for the city of Fort Worth. He's got decades of experience. I'm excited to see him in this interim role use the skills and abilities and knowledge that he has to support the staff that we have at the airport, as well as help us get through the next few months as we look forward to starting a recruitment process for the next permanent aviation director early in 2025. So welcome, Michael, please, at this time.
Three informal reports on the agenda today.
The first is an informal report 827, which notes our standard required disclosures with the Texas Ethics Commission regarding investment officers of the city of Waco. That's part of a regular annual update. IR 828, the second informal report, provides an update on temporary change to our water disinfectant usage system-wide, so across the entire water system. Starting on October 21st, we'll begin using free chlorine as the disinfectant in the water for about 30 days. It's a routine procedure that the TCQ certainly allows and that we've used in years prior to help burn, to control the formation of biofilm in our distribution center that, if left untreated, has potential to cause taste and odor issues. And I do want to highlight that our water will continue to be safe to drink at this time, but some customers may notice slightly different water taste or a chlorine smell. The taste or odor is more likely to be noticed when you're using your hot water, and staff will certainly maintain a constant review of chlorine levels throughout the system and flushing water where necessary to limit those taste and odor issues. And I can assure you that that 30-day period will have a much better taste and odor than prior water treated through the DAF, through dairy issues back in the early 2000s. So rightly so, it'll be better tasting than the dairy water. All right. Get in ahead, Noddy.
Sitting the standard pretty low there, but I will remind people, because I've been on council long enough, this happens about every other year, so it's not a new thing we're trying. For 30 days, every other year, we use this other agent in the water to kind of get it cleaned up and corrected.
All right. Our last IR is 829. It's an update on our work regarding lead and copper inventory list for water utilities. I'd encourage the public to read that report. It contains valuable information about the work that the water utilities team has done to identify the lead and copper lines, as well as the timeline notification processes for residents. This is an issue that's relative nationally. It's an issue that various federal agencies have gotten involved with across the country, and I really appreciate Lisa and the team engaging on it and producing the report. Most notably, beginning tomorrow, residents will have the ability to look up water service line materials on our website. You just put your address in and you'll be able to run a report on your individual location and see what the water service line is made out of. We'll also have hard copies available for viewing at City Hall and the Central Library for those without internet access.
I'll just echo that, Bradley, on this one, a really proactive approach. This is lead and copper, old lines that had been there before we knew lead was harmful. And Lisa and the Water Department looked at our 51,000 residential water connections and found about 800 that needed replacement. We've already done 143. Good information, as Bradley said, back there on page 14 of the presentation today, but a real proactive approach. I'm proud of our Water Department.
Staying ahead of the game, for sure. We do have seven public hearings on the agenda tonight, council. Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will cover those. It's scheduled for the work session here at 3:00, but I'm guessing, based on the other work sessions we have, that Clint will be bumped to your 6:00 business session to provide the overview of the seven public hearings. We have a total of 24 resolutions on the agenda today, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to highlight any specific one, but would be glad to take any questions or comments from the council at this time.
Any questions, Bradley, on the agenda today? I'll now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes Resolution 2024-845 through Resolution 2024-868. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? There is one, 848, where I think we have an ASI. So the consent agenda will include 845 through 868, except for 848. Councilmembers, just councilmember boarder filed affidavit of substantial interest on that one. It seemed like the right thing to do, yes. The next item on the agenda is work session items 2024-830 through 835. City Manager Ford, will you please introduce the first work session?
Will do. Work session 830 is a discussion and report on collection of delinquent accounts. I'd ask Robert and Rick to come on up. I want to welcome Robert Myers from the law firm McCurry, Baselka, Bragg, and Allen, as well as Rick Boswick from the firm of Beard, Culgen, Brophy, Boswick, and Dixon. These firms are contracted parties to collect delinquent taxes and accounts for the city of Waco. We bring this team in each year to discuss the process, as well as give the council a sense of how the collection of delinquent accounts is going, and so look forward to Rick's presentation. And you'll have to introduce the third party at the table for me.
We will, Mr. Ford. If I may just for a moment, Mayor Holmes, member of the council, Robert Myers from McCurry Law Firm. And the McCurry Law Firm has represented the city since 1987. 37 years, in other words, we've been representing the city and delivering to the city council our annual report. Prior to that time, I worked for the city attorney as an assistant city attorney since 1980. So this is my 44th year as an attorney representing the city in property tax collections. During the time the firm has represented the city in those 37 reports, I know that several members of the council have been there for a while. Mr. Bullerood, the mayor, have listened to my reports, but most senior member of the council, Ms. Rodriguez, has listened to enough of the reports that she can probably recite them. And I'm here to give her the news. She's been waiting for a number of years that, Ms. Rodriguez, you and I are going to have to stop meeting like this.
I know. I agree.
I've been here as an attorney practicing law for our firm. I'll be retiring at the end of this year after 44 years representing the city, 37 with McCurry Law Firm. And we're going to have Connor Buchanan, who's been an attorney with our firm for a number of years, taking over my position. Connor's been living in the Waco area for a number of years. He's well-versed in property tax collections, ad form taxation, and he will be the new Robert Myers for the next 37 years for McCurry, Baselka, Bragg, and Allen. And I trust Rick will be at his side the entire time to make sure that all this information gets to you correctly and properly.
Which would put me somewhere over 100.
Mr. Buchanan, you also understand how we have always asked Robert to work with our folks that need the help, and I'm sure he has explained to you how we really stress that here on the council for you should work with our residents and people that are having problems.
I do, Councilman. Robert has set the standard very high, and we look forward to working towards meeting that standard as well.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding, telling him also, Robert.
Well, we've got him. I think we've got him well-versed in how things should be done to collect the city's taxes. Look forward to continuing to do that for the city, under Connor's leadership.
Thank you. I'll just echo while you were talking about this. Thanks, Robert. I appreciate you working at city and then doing this for 37 years, and you're also active in other-- I know you're with the McLennan Central Appraisal District, and you've been a great voice of reason and logic, and we've depended on you for all these years, and you've always provided great advice and kept us in the middle of the road, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And best of luck to you in your next set of endeavors. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much, Robert. You've given a lot to the city when you worked for the city, and in this tax collection role, you've done a good job, and I think like councilmember Rodriguez said, we appreciate the way that you work with our folks and to ensure that all dollars are returned to the city, but also not in a punitive way. So we've appreciated that, that kind of maybe velvet hammer approach there that you've taken.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
As most of-- well, everybody I'm looking at, I'm Rick Boswick from the Beard Culgen firm, and I will miss Robert. We've been doing this together for several decades, and we are close to the same age. I don't-- I'll continue to practice probably until my partners tell me I need to quit. But I intend to be here next year, and I intend, and certainly Ms. Rodriguez brought up, the balance that our firms have tried to employ, which we understand to be the policy of this city. And the balance is you need a stable tax collection system that provides the sort of financial stability that you depend on to budget every year. But on the other hand, the people that we are collecting taxes from are not only everybody at this table and in front of us, but our neighbors and our friends and your constituents. And we have always understood that it is our duty to try to understand and try to work with people that have a difficulty, for some reason, for some year, paying their taxes. And our experience is that is almost always not because they don't want to. It is because of other issues which they are dealing with and which complicate that payment. And we have committed to working with them. And we understand that that is our duty and our responsibility to you, and we want to assure you that we understand that. And we'll continue that. I mean, that's the way we've proceeded for decades, and that's the way we will proceed in the future. With that, I want to address, if we can, the current report. And the first exhibit that you've got are current tax collections, which are, you know, frankly, the city of Waco is privileged to get that kind of current tax collection rate. And as you've seen, it is consistent with every year since 2019. And there's, I mean, we kind of take it for granted in Waco, but many cities do not have the luxury of that kind of tax collection rate. If we can turn to the second exhibit, this is the total annual collections, and as you will see, that ultimately typically exceeds the taxes levied. This year, there was an issue. It's not much, but I want to bring it up because if I were in y'all's position, I would ask about it. And what happens is we collect, and in this particular instance, and it happened in 2019, sometimes there are enough appeals in the appraisal process that while we collect the same percentage of taxes, there is a refund according to appraisal appeals, and that is what accounts for a slightly less total annual collection this year. And I just, I mean, it's the sort of thing I would have thought about and I would have asked about, and rather than ignoring it, I wanted to draw that to your attention and offer the understanding that we have. That is solely because occasionally, and you know, it's hard to predict, there are more appeals of appraisals and there are more refunds, even though the taxes are collected at the same rate, there are more refunds which actually are reflected in the lower annual tax collections. Can we turn to the next one?
Yep, certainly.
This is the collection of the tax levy, and as you can see, this is illustrative of the fact that the longer we have to collect those taxes over a period of time, you're going to collect 99.75% or more of those taxes over time. And it takes, and Robert will explain in a minute, what process is employed to collect the delinquent taxes, and those processes, obviously, as he will explain, take time. But ultimately, as you will see in the bar graph, you collect essentially 100%.
And just to reiterate what Rick was saying about stability in your revenue source, both this chart and first chart, talking about your current tax collections, really exhibit the stability of property taxes and the collection rates the city has achieved through the years and ensuring that it has the revenue it needs to meet its budget. How our firms actually dovetail into the tax collections, we have a chart here with three pie charts on it, and especially for councilmember Chase, who's just joined the council. The way that works is your taxes become due in October of the year. They become delinquent if not paid by February 1 of the next year. Any remaining balance in July is turned over to our firms for collection. So for example, in this year, in July of 2024, the unpaid taxes from 2023, which is the pie chart at the top, were referred to us for collections. And at that time, we go through the tax roll, the delinquent tax roll that's referred to us. We send out initial sets of letters notifying the taxpayer that we are the attorneys that represent the city in property tax collection, notifying them that the amount of taxes that are due, giving them the information. We have a local office staff with local people that can visit them without any issues they may have about their tax collections, set up payment agreements, and work through any problems they may have with either appraisal district or assessment questions. And through that type of contact, we collect a lot of property taxes for the city of Waco. We also begin the initiation of lawsuits if we feel necessary to do so, to file. And since, to give you an idea of our tax collection abilities, in 2023 taxes that referred to as just, the chart says two months ago, it was actually three months ago, we collected 44, or close to 45% of those taxes, base tax. That's just, all these numbers here are base tax, so we can compare apples and apples, apples and oranges, in just a very short period of time, and we're continuing our collection activity. The pie chart on to our left, the 2022 taxes referred to us a little over a year ago, we've collected 75%, nearly 75% of those taxes. And the ones on the right-hand side, we've collected over 80% of those taxes that were referred to us just a little over a couple of years ago. As you can see, the green wedge of the pie, it's larger and larger as the balance, and that balance of the colors, that's the difference between the last chart we looked at, is the less, a little bit less than 100% of the taxes that you don't collect, and we're continuing our collection activities. And just to let you know, the largest unpaid segment of property taxes in the city of Waco are taxes due on our seniors and persons who are disabled because state law protects their homesteads from those tax collection activities, as well as disabled veterans. And so we recognize and go through the roll and determine what accounts are in that category, homesteads of disabled persons or seniors, and those persons, they're protected from forced sale. And if they're able to make payment of taxes, we're certainly welcome to do so, and many of them do. We work through their ability to make those payments. But if they are not, we indicate those and we cease any collection activities because they're protected under state law and state constitution from being forced in their homes for non-payment of property taxes, and we recognize that, that is their right, and we work with them to make sure that they get that recognized if they don't have their exemption paperwork in place. And that's the largest thing, wedge of the unpaid taxes outstanding. But these three pie charts represent the three sets of taxes most recently you've turned over to us, and as you can see, it doesn't take us long to get those collected for you. And again, how we go about doing that, we send out tax notices, and last year, we sent over nearly 7,700 tax notices repeatedly throughout the year. We time them with the tax office at the county to make sure that they, the people are constantly notified of the unpaid taxes. We do file lawsuits. We filed 164 lawsuits in the past year to collect the taxes to the city, and we recover judgments in favor of the city for those. In most cases, the taxes, the lawsuits resolve without referring, moving to the next stage, which is judgments, and we work with the taxpayers routinely through this process, and most any time, we get those taxes paid one way or the other, and we don't have to go on to the next. Final sale, which is tax sales. Most of the tax sales that take place are on vacant abandoned properties. We work very closely with the city code enforcement offices to focus on those properties that are code enforcement problems, high grasses and weeds, vacant properties, and things like that. That's for the most part, which ends up at the auction block, and we've been very successful working with the city in doing that. In addition to collecting delinquent taxes for the city, we also work in collecting, as I mentioned to you, the liens the city has imposed on these vacant-- as I mentioned to you, the liens the city has imposed on these vacant abandoned properties. This past year, in addition to filing lawsuits to collect taxes, we've also included in our lawsuits, we had 19 properties that had over $53,000 in liens due to the city for mowing and abating nuisances. We covered judgments on $93,000. And we've actually foreclosed and sold properties that had over $91,000 in liens due to the city of Waco, in addition to the property taxes that likewise were due. We also represent the city in municipal court collections. Those are unpaid fines and fees due to municipal court. And this last year, they referred to us over 6,000 cases that had over $3 million outstanding in fines and fees due to the city of Waco. Through payment agreements and through just payments, 2,600 of those cases referred to us, we recovered $574,000. 3,000 of the cases were recalled, which leads to a total resolution of about 5,600 of the cases for over, close to $2 million. We also assist, we're a one-shot, one-shot for the city, one-shot call for the city if they have any collection issues. Most of that gets involved in bankruptcy with utility, the airport, or any department the city has that has a bankruptcy manner filed for it. Our bankruptcy attorney or our staff are available to assist them and work them through the bankruptcy process, or any other collection process they have with other debts due to the city, in addition to municipal liens, municipal taxes, and municipal court cases. So overall, we provide the city a one-stop shop for any debt or any account that they have, that they need some assistance in getting into collections. And we've appreciated the ability of the willingness of the city to allow us to represent it for the last 37 years. And I know Connor and Rick look forward to working with you in the future to continue the success we've had in collecting the amounts due to the city of Waco. And I very much appreciate your allowing me to do so for the last 44 years. And I thank you very much.
And with one last note, I want y'all to know, even though our firms have been doing it a long time, we don't take that for granted. It's a privilege to do it, and it's a privilege to be able to do it in a way that y'all feel comfortable with and your constituents feel comfortable with.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. Any questions or comments, guys?
Thank you all. And Robert, we're grateful for all you've done for the city of Waco. And thank you, both firms. We appreciate it. Connor, look forward to working with you.
Sorry, I only got to hear one of the 44 presentations. But thank you.
They're on video, I'm sure.
I'll go back and watch all those.
Yeah, if you can't sleep, try it out.
George, I remember when I first got on council, I think, Rick, you prefaced this report as being a dry report that nobody gets into. But I love, this is the kind of report I love. Because every year, you have the, easy to understand, you can see exactly where you guys are, you see some history on the project. And I like the way you kind of boil it down into research, you research the deal, and you either do a payment plan, which I think is, most of, like 10% of these are payment plans you come up with over the last three years. Last resort is, you know, the judgment part, which nobody wants, but sometimes that's just, sometimes even that's the common resolution you have to come up with. But I appreciate, I think, as Councilmember Boardred said, the velvet hammer, I guess you call it. When people hit a tough patch, you guys are creative in coming up with payment plans. As you've done the eight years I've been on council, that data is important to me. It shows that we're sensitive to Waco. And so thanks for the work that you do here. And as I do every year, thank you to the citizens of Waco. Most of you guys are paying your taxes on time. Hopefully, we're delivering the services that you require. So I appreciate you guys. And Bosswick, don't be a short timer like Myers over here, right? 37 years is nothing.
I'm trying. I'm working out every day.
All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Manager Ford, the next item is 2024-831.
That's correct. We're going to invite Lisa Tire, our Director of Water Utilities, up for this next presentation. It's going to be a discussion of our water source protection plan. Feel like former city manager STEM may have done a good job of introing this presentation with his comments here a few minutes ago. But Lisa's going to provide an update to the council on our strategies as pertains to protection of the drinking water for Waco and our customer entities all around the region. As council is aware, source water protection in Waco has a long history. And we remain fully committed to diligent work in the watershed to ensure that we have good tasting and smelling water, but secure water rights and secure ability to serve the region for many decades to come. Lisa's going to add a lot more to that and look forward to her presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I am Lisa Tire, and I'm here to talk to you about the Source Water Protection Plan. So the purpose of the plan is really to protect Lake Waco and the Brazos River. They are our primary supply of drinking water for the next 100 years, as the Integrated Water Resource Plan pointed out. These water bodies do face threats from seasonal weather changes, from sedimentation, and from pollution, from agricultural runoff and urban development. And so to safeguard these resources, we've put together some strategies that hopefully will ensure their continued benefit to the community. So the agenda today is the Bosque Brazos Watershed, Waco's history of source water protection, confined animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, proposed source watershed plan, and just some key points to follow up with. So this is the Brazos River Basin. It is the longest river basin in the state of Texas. It stretches from about 50 miles into New Mexico, all the way down to the Gulf of Mexi, to the Gulf of Mexico. And it's a 1,050-mile-long river. And the watershed area is comprised of 44,620 square miles. The Bosque River watershed is contained within the Brazos River Basin watershed. It begins north of Stephenville and travels all the way down to Waco. The length is much smaller, 115 miles, and the watershed area is again smaller at 1,190 square miles. So Lake Waco, depending on where you look, we get about 75% of our water from the North Bosque River. But we also still get water in from the Meadow Bosque, the South Bosque, and Hog Creek. One of the interesting things is that during the drought, any inflow we were seeing was coming from the Meadow Bosque, South Bosque, and Hog Creek. It was not coming from the North Bosque River at all, which that was rather unusual. Our water rights, we have 79,000 acre feet in Lake Waco, and acre feet is equal to 325,851 gallons of water. So a total of about 25.8 billion gallons of water. So in the Brazos River, the Brazos River has about 2.5 million acre feet of storage or a capacity of about 814 billion gallons of water. Waco's water right in the Brazos River is 8,001 acre feet, or about 2.6 billion gallons of water. So while it is not the primary source, you can still see that it could be quite an important source for us in the future.
And Lisa, our water rights are like a series of different rights. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Like there's several rights that allow us to take that total amount. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in the Brazos River, we have some of the oldest in the state for that river, which just makes them even more valuable because we have the right to stop other people from taking water in order for us to get our water. So this is a quick timeline of the North Bosque River and the impairment that happened within that river. So in 1990, the North Bosque River was identified as a problem river. In 92, it was listed as impaired on EPA's through a 3D list of impaired water bodies. Through the years, there were a series of meetings and a group was formed. By 2001, we had a total maximum daily limit for phosphorus that had been approved. And in 2002, we had an implementation plan that had been improved, had been approved, which included changing CAFO permits in the North Bosque River from general permits to individual permits. This is a much more involved process for the CAFOs, for them to be able to get a permit in the North Bosque River. In 2004, Waco sued 14 CAFOs for damages and the Clean Water Act violations. By 2005, we'd had eight of those that we had settled with. In 2006, we were in mediation with six of those CAFOs. Part of that mediation required for us to sample water for two years. After two years, it showed no improvements and the judgments were upheld. Several of those CAFOs went out of business as a result of those judgments. In 2020, TCQ formed the North Bosque River Group to discuss TMDL progress, so that's the total maximum daily limits or loads. And that group ended their discussion in March of 2021 with the premise that the water was still impaired and the TMDLs still needed to be there and enforced. And in 2023, we saw the legislation to alter the current law was introduced and subsequently defeated. So what did impairment look like before the TMDLs, before the DAF, the Dissolved Airflow Airflotation Plan? So what did it look like? Well, this is Duffell Creek. All that is algae. This creek was suffocating. There was no aquatic life left in it. The only thing that was living were these little slugs that seemed to like methane, a rich environment. It was not pretty. And you can imagine, we had property owners that weren't CAFOs, that their, the property had been in their family for 100 years. It used to be a pristine creek, and now this is what they were having in their backyards. We were kind of the, we had a lot of bad press, a lot of cartoons came out about our taste and odor of our water. So that was not a great thing. Many of y'all may recall, most restaurants weren't serving Waco water straight from the tap. So one of the problems that we had was that we had so many cows. Erazo County became the major milk producer in the state of Texas at the time. They were considered the dairy capital. If I recall correctly, they had about 57% of all milk production was occurring in one county north of us. 64,000 dairy cows producing 120 pounds of wet manure daily. That comes to 2,803,000 pounds of waste. And where did it go? Well, the way they handle this is, a lot of the waste, liquid waste, goes into lagoons. And the more, it's not even really dry, it's just kind of a wet manure, liquidy kind of waste, went out into application fields. And one of the problems, even with the lagoons, is the lagoons weren't properly sized for the herds. So they were typically overflowing. And in fact, at times when we were doing helicopter tours of the dairies, flyovers, you could see just kind of a permanent drainage down to some creek where the lagoons were habitually overflowing into the creeks. Solid waste manure gets applied to the fields. Liquid waste gets applied to the fields. And one of the things they're doing is the more solid waste has most of the phosphorus in it, but the liquid waste has most of the nitrogen. And so they're kind of combining these two wastes together to put out on the fields, but they're doing it, they're applying it at the rate that they need to achieve the nitrogen rate, which is about three to one. So about one part phosphorus, three parts of nitrogen. And so they're overapplying the phosphorus to the fields. One of the interesting things about phosphorus is it moves by water. It doesn't really, it doesn't gas off, it doesn't, there's no other way. It either gets uptake into plants, or rain hits it and it runs off. So this is, it's kind of hard to tell this, but this is an algal bloom in Lake Waco. This is an algal bloom in Lake Waco. And, you know, algae is how we get our bad taste and odor issues into our water because when the algae gets into the plant and chlorine is applied, the algae dies and it releases this substance called geosmin. And that geosmin is what creates that taste and odor issue. So having algae in your lake, besides the fact that it's an indication of too much nutrients in your lake and it's just not good for the health of the lake overall, it actually has a humid impact in the fact that we were getting all the taste and odor issues. This is an actual algal bloom in our wastewater treatment plant. So it got this far in there, it's blooming. And so that is not good in any way because it requires effort, extra effort to treat, to remove. And on top of that, all this is extra expense for our rate payers because it requires more, it just requires more chemical, more staff time, everything. So there's a cost to having algal blooms to our rate payer payers' pocketbook, too. So why have we not been having this lately? So what changed? Waco was really publicly vocal during this time about the issues we were having. Upstream wastewater treatment plants, which were part of the problem as well, they had to update their processes. Waco pursued legal action against bad actors, and in June 2011, the dissolved airflowation plant became operational. It cost almost $60 million in engineering and construction for that plant. And we have since spent approximately $53 million on operations and maintenance in the last 13 years. So just also a reminder, as this plant ages, as the DAF ages, it's going to cost us more, not less. It's in a corrosive environment, we use ozone as a disinfectant. So that means that everything there is going to corrode at a faster pace than what it would in a normal environment. So we should be expecting that this cost will be ramping up. In addition, during this time, we spent about $5 million in legal fees. I can't imagine how much that would be in today's dollars, but I'm sure 10, 15, 20 million dollars in legal fees. So overall, to date, Waco's invested over $118 million and counting to try and solve a problem it didn't create. So this is just a picture of the DAF skimming organics off the raw water. If you see the white spots, that's actually the dissolved little tiny air bubbles that pushes all the organics up to the top, then we skim it off, and then we send it to the ozone for disinfection. And so if you haven't taken that tour, that is a great tour to take. This does not smell pretty. It doesn't smell like green, you know, freshly mowed grass or anything. It is pretty, pretty odorous. I know that Councilmember Marvel was there, she probably got a whiff of it. But all that gets skimmed off and put into our sewer plant. And so it doesn't have any horrible consequences, it's just that we are still having to treat it again. So ramping up our activities to protect the watershed, we have hired a source watershed manager who starts in early November. We've increased sampling, particularly during flushing or heavy rainfall events. Monitoring other agencies' water samples, we're not the only one out there sampling water, so we're getting that data in from them as well, including the Texas Institute of Implied Environmental Research at Charlton State University in Stephenville. Conducting water sampling at the request of property owners. So we have property owners out there who will call us and say, hey, I think, you know, the dairy has released something, can y'all come test the water? We'll go out there and we'll grab a sample and we'll test the water. And we've been meeting with CAFO operators to tour sites and increase understanding of the digesters being installed. So they're starting to install digesters, much like what we have at our own wastewater treatment plant, in fact, exactly like that, as well as a DAF to separate solids and liquids. But we want to understand how they're utilizing this and what they plan to do with that waste. So rather than having a manure content that is really, really almost liquid, I call it kind of chunky liquid, they will have cake manure that is about 30% liquid and, or 30% moisture content. So it's lighter, it's more economical for the dairies to transport that than if they're trying to haul the liquid waste. And also, we're trying to understand the science regarding the application of phosphorus and waste application fields using studies from the University of Nebraska and from Texas A&amp;M. So our source water protection plan. I need to flip pages so I can make sure I remember everything I want to say about this.
On that, just like on the last, kind of where you finished there, it sounds like we're actively monitoring Bosque and Erazo County dairy operations to see how they're handling their waste. Is that fair to say from what?
No, they actually invite us out there.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I mean, you know, hey, we're doing this because we know that most likely in the future, they're going to be submitting applications asking for increased caps. So if they're, in their view, if they're processing this waste in a more efficient way and they're able to move their manure waste out, maybe to additional fields, we hope what they're doing is moving them out of our watershed, then they in turn could support more cattle.
So there are ways for those upstream operations to increase capacity without necessarily impacting our watershed, but that requires vigilance on our part.
It requires vigilance on our part. It requires a willing participant on their part.
Okay.
What percentage of those would you say are willing participants?
It's difficult. I think they all have good intention. I mean, they're running businesses, right? I mean, they're looking for the most economical way they can eliminate waste. So we have some dairies that really talk about they want to use everything they produce and keep it on the land. Well, that doesn't really help us. If you get 3,000 more cows, that just means you're putting more waste on the land than if you're hauling it off, than if you're composting it and selling the composting to someone else. So I'm not, I can't speak for all of them. There's only about four of them right now that are installing these digesters. But keep in mind, there are about 104 dairies in this area, but only a handful of them are considered, I say handful, I think the number is around, I'm going to say a number and it's probably not going to be right, so I probably shouldn't say a number. There's a certain number of them, though, that are just kind of that typical family farm. They've got 400 head of cattle. They've got 300 head of cattle. And you've got other ones that have, you know, 6,000 cows. And those are the CAFOs. And that's really what the regulation and what we're focusing on is trying to work with the CAFOs to find a way, a solution to the problem, basically. And so there are some that seem to be very willing to explore other options, and there's other ones that that's just not their philosophy. Now, I don't want to paint anybody bad. I don't know of anybody, they've all been nice to us, they've all been respectful to us. We're just not always on the same page together.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think, I think that's well said, that last statement, Lisa. It's not, with a critical thing like our water supply, best intentions, they're nice to have, but we have to manage to the reality of beyond best intentions. And so I think, I think you said it well in that last comment.
So potential issues affecting Lake Waco and Brazos River. Obviously, algal blooms, which are the rapid growth of algae caused by high nutrient levels. And they usually results in poor water quality, taste and odor. Sedimentation and turbidity, and this is usually caused by erosion. And again, that can impair water quality. Oxygen depletion, this is the organic decomposition can cause, and algal growth can cause low oxygen. And usually the result of that is a fish kill. So the fish will die off and float to the top. If you've ever seen pictures of that, it's not pretty. Excessive aquatic plant growth, it's just an overgrowth of aquatic plants, and that's, again, a result of high nutrients. Water level fluctuations, this is our droughts and our floods that change aquatic habitat. And species shifts. So, you know, we can also have non-native species come in, much like we had the zebra mussels. And I will brag on the city of Waco for this, we are the only lake in the country that's been able to eradicate zebra mussels, the only. And I don't know that we'll always be able to say that because they are in the lakes all around us. We've just lucked out so far after we smothered them.
I thought it was laser beams. It wasn't lasers? No, it's actually, the staff and corps did a good job on that, so that's well highlighted. It was not as high-tech as laser beams, but it was just as effective.
Just as effective. And then of course-
Lisa, did you say in the U.S. or Texas?
Pardon?
Did you say in the U.S. or Texas?
I've heard it's in the U.S. Nobody's been able to eradicate them.
Well, I mean, Texas rules are, if we say it, it is so.
And then, of course, there's human impacts to the lake and the river. Urban, industrial, and agricultural practices impact everything. And so, you know, it's just really important that we start addressing all of those, not just any one specific. And we do have strategies for this. So we're going to continue doing our monitoring and assessment. And we're going to practice some watershed management, which will help minimize, we hope, nutrient runoff and sedimentation. Some of this is education of our own population on what measures they can take. Pollution control, again, this, a lot of this is going to be regulations and practices to control point source pollution. And that's what a wastewater treatment plan is, that is what a CAFO is, it's a point source pollution. Habitat restoration, community engagement, we really do need to do a better job of informing our own community of the value that Lake Waco and the Brazos River are, not just economically, but to their view of Waco as a whole. I mean, it's part of our identity. Invasive species, monitoring and controlling that. And then adaptive management. And this is really key because from our data, from monitoring and research, we need to be able to change these strategies, kind of almost on the fly as we're getting new information. So we're hoping by implementing these strategies, Waco can better manage the health of Lake Waco and the Brazos River. So our emphasis going forward, we have hired the Source Watershed Protection Manager. Her name is Kimberly Ganas, and she has a master's degree in environmental science and has been working as a program supervisor for the Texas State Soil and Conservation Board. In addition, her undergraduate was from Tarleton State, where she also worked on that Texas Institute of Applied Engineering, Environmental Research tiers. And so she is familiar with what that group does to go out and do their water sampling and testing. So I think she's a great find for us. We want to continue sampling and monitoring of Lake Waco, the Brazos River. We actually monitor the North Boski River, and we do sample all the tributaries as well. So the Meadow in the South and Hog Creek as well. And we want to continue working with the tiers and the Brazos River Authority so that we're, in my view, we're all not sampling the exact same site that, as we're out there sampling, it's a diverse sampling sites. We want to revitalize the Boski River Coalition. There was a group that met in, usually in Hightown or Stephenville, property owners and dairies that would meet and discuss different issues. We were real active for a while as there were less and less issues. It seemed to start, you know, dying down. You'd have four people show up for it, you'd have six people show up for it. But we want to get back and try and get that revitalized and get that group active again. And we want to, I guess, and we want to continue reviewing the CAFO permits, continue monitoring TCEQ soil sample results of waste application fields. So all the waste application fields have to be tested, are supposed to be sampled annually, and those results available. So you can see how much phosphorus is actually being applied to the fields. There are rules on how much phosphorus can be applied. They all should be under 200 parts per million. And so we want to make sure that that's happening, and we want to continue to get that data and monitor that. And we want to inform our citizens of the value of Lake Waco and the Brazos watershed. And then we also are going to present to you today a CAFO matrix. So we were talking a little bit at times about that flushing effect that we have. So when you're out sampling the North Boski River and it looks like it did in drought right here, you have very different results than you do when it looks like flood right there. When it floods like that and there's that much rain, it hits all those waste application fields, and there's enough to carry it all the way down to the Boski River. And just as an example, these are all testing sites. The blue is from March of '23. The orange is from October of '23, when we had the massive amount of rain. And you can see that it's not the same sampling results as what you get in a drought versus a flood event. So when we talk about that flushing effect, that's exactly what it looks like.
So, I mean, from a- From a water supply perspective, when there is flooding on the Boski River and in Boski County, that usually means our lake will be filling up like it did to end the drought this last time. But in terms of water quality, as opposed to water supply, that can mean we're also getting a lot of phosphate coming our way. Is that, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, let me go back. So our CAFO matrix, we designed a CAFO matrix. It has been reviewed by city consultants. We have given it to the Texas Association of Dairymen, and we have requested their comments because we'd like to hear what issues they might see with it that we're not. The CAFO matrix is designed to allow for the growth of CAFOs without conflict from Waco by utilizing a digester to efficiently process waste, ensuring the waste application fields are in compliance, so they need to maintain those field levels below 200 parts per million of phosphorus, removing waste from the watershed, manure transported, you know, we want the manure transported out of the North Boski watershed, and if they have no outstanding violation, compliance violations. And then council approval of the CAFO matrix once we get all the comments back in and have it reviewed. So this is page one of the matrix. And so if we had a CAFO permit that came in and they're wanting to renew their permit, they're not increasing their herd size at all, they're utilizing a digester, and 80% of their fields, waste application fields, are in compliance with none of them being over 500 parts per million, and they have no outstanding violations, Waco would issue a comment on their application, but we would not hold up their application in any way. That same scenario, but one of their waste application fields are over 500 parts per million, we're going to comment with the intent to contest.
Is that what the third column says, comment with contest? Okay, sorry.
Well, let me explain that because that's not as easy to do as what it sounds. In order for us to help support a contested case, we need a property owner that is within one mile downstream of the CAFO, and they're the ones who actually have to do the contested case. That is called standing. We don't have standing, we're too far away. So that's one reason for needing that North Boski River Coalition, so that you are developing those relationships with people who live in those areas. That's the importance. This is a CAFO that wants to increase their herd size by more than 10%, a 10% increase. If this CAFO filed an application and they want to increase their herd by more than 10%, and all their, all their waste application fields are less than 200 parts per million, we're not going to have a problem. Because we're going to say, you're, you're in compliance completely. And as long as you can stay in compliance, we're not going to interfere with your application And then the third one is if you're a brand-new dairy and you're moving into the area and you're buying land to put your dairy out there, we want you to haul everything out. You're not already here existing, you're new. We want you to make your plans to haul your manure outside of our watershed. So it's, I know that when I talk about this, it makes it sound like everybody's out of compliance, but if you look, the majority of fields are in compliance. There is, I think it's four fields that are over 500 parts per million. There is 21% that's greater than 200 parts per million, but they're still less than 500. And the 1% is unknown. I'm not quite sure why they're classified by TCEQ is unknown. Maybe they were new and they just haven't been tested. But one of the caveats on all this data that I'm giving you about the fields is that some of them have not been tested in two and three years, even though they're supposed to be tested annually. And they're tested by TCEQ annually. And so, you know, one of our, one of the things we want to do is arrange a meeting with TCEQ to just talk to them about how can we help them, how can they, how can we help them help us by getting these done? And, you know, not, we all understand shortage of staff issues, we understand new staff, we understand equipment breaking down, but what can we do to assist them to, to be, for them to be in compliance in these roles?
Lisa, I have one question on this one. The pie chart represents the number, remind me of the acronym again, WAF.
Oh, Waste Application Fields.
Waste Application Fields. So, but this, does this like cover acreage, or is this just taking whatever, the thousand farms?
This is the number of fields. So a CAFO may have, I've seen some of them that have eight waste application fields, some of them have 22 waste application fields. So there's no set number of waste application fields that they have to have.
And they're all, all waste application fields are the same size?
No.
All right, I'm just trying to get to, I think, I think it's, but what if one waste application field is 100 acres and the next one is one acre? This really, this pie doesn't really represent, could be a lot worse, you know what I mean? Or could be better.
Yeah. So we have asked, we have submitted an open records request, and we're waiting for a response back. They do have a chart, they have a map that shows all the, they're going to call them land management units, but a waste application field resides within a land management unit. A land management unit may be the whole CAFO, or it may be a section of the CAFO. So we've asked for that map to try and get more information. It is just something we've not been able to get yet.
Okay, thanks.
We are, one of our consultants is working on that for us. So one of the other things I really want to bring up, again, we understand that this is, these are businesses, and these people live out on this acreage. This is, this is their livelihood. And we want to find ways that we can maybe partner together to work with the Texas Association of Dairymen in some of these CAFOs. So we're looking for long-term solutions, such as the digesters and the DAFs and composting, maybe tax incentives or credits for them hauling manure out of our watershed, and legislation to refine the permit process, maybe reward those who are in compliance, completely in compliance, and are removing their manure out of the watershed. Maybe they could get a streamlined application process. So the key points I just really want to hone in on is that we already have a history of protecting Lake Waco and our drinking water supply from upstream pollution. And we've done it with our time, and we've done it with our money. And Waco will continue to advocate for sound watershed management practices in both the Brazos and the North Boski watersheds. Waco's looking for opportunities to partner with the CAFOs for long-term solutions, but Waco's not willing to compromise on the water quality of the North Boski River.
Counsel, before y'all hop in there, when Lisa was talking to you about the waste application fields and that 200 parts per million standard.
One thing that's important to note is that is not necessarily a standard founded in, we'll call it agricultural science. A normal field is going to struggle, a crop is going to struggle to uptake more than 60 parts per million of phosphorus. So anything above, the regs talk about 200, but the reality on the ground is if you've got crops planted and you're expecting it to uptake anything north of 60, it's likely not going to happen. So basically, anything north of 60 is going to sit there and wait for a rainfall event to flush out. So there's a little bit of difference between science and what the regs require. So you've got to think about where we draw our lines and that sort of thing. And we've got to work within the 200, but just wanted to add that perspective to Lisa's really good presentation.
Lisa, can you put it back on the last slide, right before the question slide? There it is, perfect. Thank you so much. Yeah, I guess, you know, I know that Councilmember Rodriguez has been a part of this conversation probably the longest of anyone on council in terms of fighting for our water. We've, you know, we've fought battles on water supply in the last few years, just making sure we have enough. But water quality has been a much longer fight as well. been a much longer fight as well. And I appreciate all of the good city staff, city managers, mayors, and councils that have gone before that have fought this out, whether litigation, whether in the legislature, whether just making quality improvements to our system like we're continuing to do. So I'm grateful, you know, as we heard from former city manager Wiley Stem, who has been on the forefront of this for many years earlier today, I'm grateful for all those who have gone before, and I'm grateful that our community kind of has a muscle memory of this being very important to us. And so I appreciate the good work of staff in being creative. I appreciate the partnership with the CAFOs and trying to work with them and work collaboratively where we can, and making sure that everyone is, and, you know, and maybe trying to root out, do we have a bad actor here, or hey, they're acting in their own best interest, but also in that of ours as well. So I'm very grateful for all the good work staff is doing and has done for decades, and for prior councils and staff in fighting for our water quality. I too remember the taste of the water from back in the day, and the taste of, you know, fountain drinks that we're using Waco water, let alone just the tap water taste. So I think we've come leaps and bounds, and that is no longer, you know, a stigma with our water currently, and I hope to keep it that way. And I appreciate all the good work that our staff is doing to ensure that.
Yeah. So let me, I want to add one other point. We should not get complacent with that DAF, that it's removing everything. It could get overwhelmed if we had a really huge algae bloom. It might not remove enough to keep the taste and odor at the same level. And we have to be careful because the ozone itself can produce some byproducts. And so we're always in a balancing act on how much we can use of the ozone and how much the DAF can remove.
And where is it located?
It's off of Lake Shore. So if you're going down the heart of Texas soccer fields, there's a drive to your left. There's a sign, and it's right over there.
Take a left on Airport Road there, and a left on that driveway.
Thanks, Lisa. I'm coming from the box. So a couple of things. If you haven't had the tour, take it. I went when I first got elected, but I went recently again, and it is, it's one of those things you have to see in order for you to really experience and understand how much work is done to keep our water, our drinking water, good and clean, and how much work goes into it. Lisa's right, but it's waste, and, you know, we are aware that it's waste. But it's not anything that you can't deal with, but you know that for that work, it would be so much worse. Thank you for the great presentation. The only things and questions I have is I know that you were having conversations with the property owners, as well as the Dairymen's Association. Did we hear anything back from them as to, you know, what they're, where they are? I mean, you know, because I know that we're all working to try to get a solution, to maintain a solution for the residents of Waco and McFadden County, you know, but they realize that they have a part in this too, right?
So when we usually meet with them, we'll talk about ways that we could work together, but at the same time, we talk about them, but the bottom line, our job here is to protect Lake Waco.
Correct.
You know, that is the bottom line for us. And so they understand the importance. They've had the Dairy Matrix about a week now. So I would hope to be able to hear something, I would think, by the end of the month. But if not, we'll reach back out to them and ask them again, you know, do they have any comments? Because I certainly, if we've over, I don't want to use the word overreach, but if we've missed something, it would be nice to have it pointed out before we go too far down this road.
Correct. And then also, it wasn't the last slide, but it was maybe one or two before that you were talking about legislation, yeah, legislation to refine the process. Do we have, and I'm going to say, I assume we have a champion that maybe could make that a part of this, the upcoming session?
I'm going to let Bradley ask.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think we have, you know, we have to watch for, of course, the results in early November, and I'm sure each of the candidates in the state house race would be equally concerned. But, you know, candidate Pat Curry has certainly wanted to have a high level of engagement, and is, if elected, will certainly want to carry any legislation that Waco feels like is important to protect the water.
That's fair. I mean, I think I've also heard both candidates mention the priority of keeping our water pure. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, yeah, I've been on the council a long time. Yes, we've been fighting this. And the council, at that time when we started this fight, Mr. Smith, was it Cullen Smith, Elizabeth Smith's daddy, or father-in-law, took, he took us, he took us all up there to visit the dairies, and for us to actually see what the cows were doing, and how they were, you know, putting all that into the water system. So we got to see firsthand, and that's why we really started, Wiley, you were with us, weren't you? He took a van full of us, council members, and city staff, and we got to see what was really going on. That's why we fought so hard to make sure that our water system was safe to drink, and to, obviously, we were all getting hit with the odor and the taste of the water. So, but actually going and seeing really, really helped for us to start and continue the fight. I just wanted to add that.
Lisa, I think this was very helpful, and I would agree with former city manager Stem that this is probably the biggest long-term issue before us. And this was very illuminating. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, great presentation, Lisa. I just had a few notes I wrote down. You know, our city is blessed to have water sources in Waco that we do have, and we don't take it for granted, certainly. So I love your proactive approach here. We have Lake Waco, and we've got the Boski and Brazos rivers as great natural sources. And we consider ourselves sort of the caretaker and the gatekeeper for all of central Texas. And all of the growth that we have here in our residence and our commercial, that we are responsible for making sure we have dependable water. And so it's important for us to protect our resources, and I appreciate your efforts there. You know, we just got out of this drought several months ago, and this fall isn't looking that great either. And we haven't had much rain this fall, and it doesn't look like we have any on the horizon. So just, we are laser-focused, and I appreciate your initiatives here that you're demonstrating. Laser-focused on water and the water supply. It's like gold, or it's like oil here. We're not, just to change, we're not trying to put dairies out of business, and we're just trying to make them operate in an appropriate fashion. And if there are preventative measures and technologies that preserve the water quality for central Texas, and they can operate, we'll figure that out. The digesters, I think, is one solution that we're seeing. But more importantly, as you point out, if there are existing violations, and the new dairies that are coming on exacerbate those situations, we're definitely going to be fighting for our water supply. There's no doubt about it. And thank you, former city manager Stem, for your words prior to the meeting today. And in the spirit of Mayor Etheridge and Mayor Jackson, I like that, the way you put it, Wiley, sustained vigilance. I mean, that's something we demonstrated back in 2004. We've got a history of showing that, and a history of continuing that if we see dangers to our water supply. Just quickly, I like your water source protection plan. The fact that we're getting a watershed protection manager, brilliant. Sampling and monitoring water sources all the time, definitely we need to be doing that. Deepening our partnership with Brazos River Authority, I think, is a great idea, and city manager and I are going to be working on that. Revitalizing that Boski River Coalition, very important. And reviewing the CAFO permits and monitoring those TSEC soil samples. We have to be sustained vigilance. We have to have sustained vigilance. So you had a great presentation. I appreciate the vigilance that we're demonstrating right now. City Manager Ford, the council members would like to take a three-to-four-minute break, just a bio-break here.
Bio-break. And if anybody's wondering why, we only have four members in the room, and so if one goes out of the room, we've got to, we don't have quorum anymore. So let's take a bio-break.
We're going to watch for that one person who's leaving.
Give you the agenda with the next work session item, work session 2024-832, City Manager Ford.
All right, 832. We've got, all right, Mr. Kane, stop creating a Russell back there, please, Mr. Kane. We've got work session 832 is a discussion of our beautification arts and culture program. And this is a relatively new program that Amanda Dyer is leading. She serves as our program manager for this division. We'll have to ask her how long she's been with the city. I feel like it's coming up on a little less than a year, maybe. She'll tell us in a moment. But as many know, she served previously at Creative Waco, so we're really pleased to have her experience on our team. She's going to present to you today kind of what the division is up to, what they've done to date, and where they're headed for fiscal year 2025. So look forward to her presentation and the council's feedback on this new program.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. I'm Amanda Dyer, and I'm happy to be here today to provide you with an update of the activities of our city's beautification arts and culture program. I'll begin with the purpose of my presentation, followed by a review of the background of the program, the program's work plan through fiscal year 2025, some current and upcoming projects, and some future plans for the program. And then finally, I'll summarize the presentation before ending with any questions that you might have. So the reason we're here today is to provide an update on the city's beautification arts and culture program, including the program's establishment, the development and implementation of the program work plan, and a preview of current activities, and to review future plans for beautification and for public art. So why beautification arts and culture? In recent years, a need was identified to beautify gateways, high-traffic corridors, and Waco's overall aesthetic to both enhance the economic development program and downtown master plan, and to encourage collaboration and participation from organizations, neighborhood associations, and residents across the city. This collaboration and support piece was key, as the city hoped to coordinate and amplify the great work in this area that is already being done by various city departments, local organizations, and individual residents. Work began with research and benchmarking of peer and aspirational communities with organizational structures similar to the one determined to be ideal for Waco. Great examples were identified in Flagstaff, Arizona's beautification arts and sciences program, and Durham, North Carolina's arts and culture and sustainable communities division, among others. The establishment of such a program would bring focus to the city's beautification work, the implementation of the public art strategic plan, and the enhancement of Waco's identity through collaboration, which would in turn ensure greater efficiency and effectiveness in addressing city council priorities. The solution to the issues identified was the 2024 establishment of the beautification arts and culture program. Program manager recruitment was launched in December 2023, and I was hired into the role at the end of February. Senior Planner for Beautification, Ashley Millard, was hired in June. When I started with the city seven months ago, I immediately began the work of developing a work plan to guide program activities through 2025. I met with staff from various departments across the city, with community stakeholders, and with city management to seek out input for the plan. The major areas of focus through fiscal year 2025 include major corridor beautification, I-35 aesthetic and lighting improvements, and arts and culture asset maintenance. I'll outline activities based on this work plan in a moment, but I also wanted to share the day-to-day work that has been going into the establishment of this brand-new program. I mentioned that I have been meeting with various stakeholders across the community, including city staff, community organizations like Keep Waco Beautiful and Creative Waco, to better understand the work that is already being done, and to identify how this new division could support and amplify it. We're focusing on effectiveness and efficiency, and working to ensure that our efforts within the community are complementary rather than contradictory, and also working to identify areas where the program can fill gaps and better focus city resources. We've already been able to step in to address some obvious areas, such as cleanup of illegal dumping at the TexDOT laydown area at Highway 6 and Loop 340, street sweeping along Lake Shore Drive from 19th to Golson Road, and the removal of a dilapidated and unused billboard at the site of the Floyd Casey Development. These specific issues just needed someone to ask the right person the right questions and to be persistent. Now our program staff are in place and are able to do that work within the beautification arts and culture sphere. As part of our current work plan, we are working to roll out several initiatives in fiscal year 2025. Under the focus area of major corridor beautification, we've put together a plan to augment the right-of-way mowing and litter cleanup for priority gateway corridors, meaning those areas that make a first impression on visitors approaching Waco by street, road, or highway. TexDOT does mow high and low-speed rights-of-way twice per year, but we all know that grassy areas can quickly become overgrown and unsightly, especially when we have more rain than normal like we did this past May. We identified a vendor to mow three high-profile areas during the summer with monthly mows in July, August, and September. These areas were East Lake Shore Drive from 19th to Golson Road, North I-35 at Forest Street, and I-35 at South Valley Mills Drive. We then identified additional locations for monthly mowing in fiscal year 2025, and we added Franklin Avenue at New Road, North I-35 at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and South I-35 at University Parks. And then also note that the I-35 at Valley Mills has been split into east and west sides for fiscal year 2025, with access dependent on the construction schedule for the 4C south corridor of I-35 scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2025. In addition, we're working to identify and prioritize a list of high-profile locations within the city for litter abatement to be handled by a vendor in fiscal year 2025. I'm also happy to share that we've partnered with Keep Waco Beautiful and City of Waco, Public Works, and Solid Waste Departments to establish and adopt a spot program. The program is modeled after the Adopt a Park partnership that Keep Waco Beautiful established with Parks and Recreation last year. Thirty high-priority locations of various sizes and complexity have been identified for the program, which will allow Keep Waco Beautiful to match volunteer groups with the right location for their size and ability. We've set a goal of matching 12 locations this fiscal year, but I'm very confident that we'll be able to exceed that goal. Each organization commits to a quarterly cleanup of their adopted spot, and their location will be marked with a roadside sign like this one, along with a custom plate with their organization's name. The corridor beautification incentive program is a matching grant program that's on today's council agenda for consideration and approval. The program will award up to $15,000 in matching funds for right-of-way adjacent improvements along high-priority corridors. This year, we're focusing on Waco Drive, Valley Mills Drive, and Franklin Avenue. Landscaping, facade, signage, public art, parking, and sidewalk improvements can be supported at eligible properties along these corridors. With council's approval of the program, applications will be accepted in January and February of 2025 for projects to be executed May 2025 through April 2026. We're also working to roll out a new signal cabinet art project. We're also working to roll out a new signal cabinet art project. The project will visually enhance high-traffic, high-traffic areas through the use of signal boxes as canvases, providing paid opportunities for local artists. The artwork will be printed on vinyl wraps that are meant to stay in place for no more than three years, and we will be working with Creative Waco, who will be administering the project. We intentionally selected Waco Drive between Lake Air Drive and New Road for the initial round because of the recently updated crossings and additional landscaping enhancements that will be completed at, at this section early next year. Future locations will rotate through different council districts. An artwork acquisition policy and procedures is currently being developed for presentation to council in the coming months. Once that, once that policy is approved and implemented, we'll kick off this program by accepting artwork proposals for a summer 2025 installation target. We also have made some progress under the I-35 aesthetics and lighting improvements work plan header. A calendar of programming for the LED lighting under I-35 at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, University Parks, and Fourth and Fifth Streets and 11th Street is scheduled to begin later this month. We'll be posting the calendar on the beautification arts and culture website, so community members can be informed of what each set of programming commemorates or honors. Our dates, on dates without specific programming, the underpasses will continue to show a rotating multicolor show that runs on a two-hour loop. So if you notice the same color each night, you're probably driving by that same location at roughly the same time nightly, because it's that, that nightly cycle has already been started. The process for residents to submit programming requests will be reestablished in the coming months, and that request tool will also be located on the BAC website. An RFP has been published for evaluation and replacement of the current bridge lighting system, and in the meantime, staff are troubleshooting the existing system and expect to have a recommendation for repairs or replacement within 60 days. Public Works staff will be presenting details in a future informal report to council, depending on what is found and the expense to correct the deficiencies. This work will be coupled with a review of the existing I-35 lighting policy to ensure that all I-35 decorative lighting is addressed in that policy.
Um, can I jump in here?
Yes.
City Manager Ford, you knew I was gonna jump in here.
I may have to turn your mic off.
I think I know where you're going.
Amanda, this is-
Mayor, this is your meeting. This is your meeting.
Great presentation. I think everybody knows that my old pet project is the, uh, the I-35, um, can you, can you go back to that other slide there? All right. The, the I-35 bridge lights-
Yes.
That, and I, and, and we're good, by the end of the, in 60 days, we're gonna try to at least diagnose what's wrong there, and maybe estimate how much that's gonna cost. I wanna bring it up, because when it was on, I, I think most Wacoans remember, it was like maybe six years ago, seven years ago, when it was on, the, I'm talking about the frontage lights on I-35 on the frontage roads, ones that are kind of evoke the memory of the, or the, or the vision of the suspension bridge. And some of the newer Wacoans maybe have never even seen it, but I know it's in a lot of, when you see pictures of Waco, that those bridge lights, uh, the, the kind of ambient colorful lights are on. And, uh, and working with City Manager Ford, I know we were testing those out last week just to see what was going on. I happened to be over at, uh, at McLean Stadium as they were being tested, and it's, the brilliance of those are, is phenomenal. And I think a lot of people would take, residences would go out of their way just to see what colors the bridges were, you know, on that particular night. Uh, and they, a lot of people don't know, they haven't been working for four or five years. And, uh, I think people think, well, we went by it, but they just weren't on, they just, but I like how this staff is, is looking into, uh, what we can do to get those back online. And, uh, that, and again, we've got a thousand things going on in, in the city right now, giant multi-million dollar projects, billion-dollar projects, but this is one of those little things, I think, uh, once we get it figured out, and, and it will be a nice addition, particularly in the context of, of our, uh, Riverwalk, sort of a separate project that we're launching this month, too. So hopefully we can get all that put together. Anyway, that's, that's all I've got to say about that. Now, in 60 days, you said 60 days, we'll have maybe a little, I did write that down.
Yes, I would say that's a ballpark. Um, I, we anticipated that you might have some questions, and so I reached out to the interim director of Public Works. That's what he shared with me, and he said, um, certainly an informal report will be coming your way.
Great, appreciate it, thanks.
Well, and Mayor, to that point, too, I, one thing I do like about, from the presentation here, is kind of a, a really intentional programming synced up with holidays, events, promotions, calendar, that's cool. I thought it was also, I think, in addition to the way they looked like when Prince passed away, rest in peace, it was cool that the bridge was purple. Like, I, I felt like, it felt like whoever was at the till with that was doing a really good job of like syncing it up to kind of national and community events, and so hopeful that, you know, that's kind of part of the approach to the underpasses and to the, uh, to the signature bridges there.
Absolutely.
Um, before you move past that, Amanda, uh, I assume that, um, what is done under the bridges, once, um, the mayor has, has thrown his weight around and officially gotten a, a response about the bridge lighting, they will be in sync?
Yes, that's the plan, is to be able to integrate the two systems, the LEDs under the underpass, and the, um, lighting for the bridge, would, they would all communicate and do the same thing at the same time. That's the plan.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Um, and Councilmember Bordero, just for the record, um, Waco was one of the first to respond publicly on a, uh, through lighting and or whatever, when his royal dad passed away, just putting that out there.
Thanks, thanks, Amanda.
Thank you. The refresh of Seventh Street Plaza falls under the arts and culture asset maintenance section air, action area, excuse me. Beautification arts and culture staff are partnering with City Center Waco and Creative Waco to refresh the space with an updated street mural, upcycled furniture, and lighting and power to create a safer or usable space that can accommodate multiple types of programming. We're also working together to develop a process to program and promote the space. We hope to return with a presentation on the proposed look and feel of the space and a framework for programming and promotion before the end of the year.
So who would that belong to? Both you and City Center, or just?
That is what we are working through, um, in the, the coming months, uh, prior to being able to provide you an update on that programming plan.
And, and, and scheduled maintenance, and I mean, like, when I say scheduled maintenance, I mean, like, painting, refresh, and uplift is, is all in that, in the plan?
Yes, we wanna think about how do we maintain the space moving forward? How do we, you know, make sure that the lights continue to work, and, you know, all of those things, um, the hardscape kind of things that have to do with the maintaining of a space, yes.
Fresh coat of paint, all that business?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you.
So an additional arts and culture asset maintenance project is the cleaning and maintenance of outdoor sculpture. Pyrology, Boundary and Studio of Bastrop sent a team in September to clean and wax 17 bronze sculptures that are part of the Waco Sculpture Zoo along the Brazos River. They also provided spot treatment to some sculptures that needed additional cleaning. Unfortunately, our, uh, furry pets enjoy the sculptures just as much as people, and sometimes they're, um, when they visit the sculptures, they create some extra corrosion that needs to be cleaned off, so that's something we have to think about as far as, um, maintaining and, uh, keeping those sculptures in their tip-top condition. Regular cleaning is a part of public art maintenance, and a rotating annual maintenance plan will be established to assess and maintain all of the pieces in the city's collection using current best practices for the different material types that are represented. In addition to what I've already shared, we also have a long list of planned initiatives for beyond 2025. We will be collaborating with other city departments to initiate and implement neighborhood beautification plans. We won't be able to address every neighborhood immediately, but we plan to focus on a handful of neighborhoods each fiscal year prioritized by need. As previously mentioned, the process for accepting resident requests for programming of the I-35 decorative lighting will be relaunched, and an aesthetic enhance, and aesthetic enhancements are already planned for the 4C, uh, section of I-35, and beautification arts and culture staff will work to support those efforts. Additionally, work is underway to implement the city's public art strategic plan that was presented to council in December of 2022. As I mentioned previously, a draft artwork acquisition policy and procedure is being developed and will be presented to council for review, approval, and implementation in the coming months. These new documents will address the processes and considerations for all the ways that the city can acquire, acquire artwork, and along with clear step-by-step, step-by-step procedures to be followed. Additionally, the city's dormant public arts advisory committee will be recommended for reactivation after a review of potential updates to the committee's scope that will better align it with the recommendations of the public art strategic plan. Another key point in the implementation of the public art strategic plan will be the development of an arts and culture asset inventory and maintenance plan. This plan will cover public art as well as memorials and historical markers. As I mentioned before, a rotating maintenance plan for the city's existing arts and culture assets that also accounts for the growth of the collection is an integral part of having a, a municipal public art collection. When working to standardize the inventory and conditions assessment of these assets across city departments, we will help, uh, to support the integrity and maintenance of the collection by creating a process for a trained professional to put eyes on each artwork on a regular basis, and gauge the need for general or more intensive maintenance and conservation. And lastly, we have some future public art projects in the pipeline that are underway or that we're already, that we're planning to support, including the South Waco Community Center mural that was presented to council at a last, at your last meeting on October 1st, and the MOU that's on today's agenda for consideration of the donation, potential murals for the exterior of the renovated Bledsoe Miller Steam Center, and a sculpture honoring firefight, the firefighting profession to be located at the new fire station number So in summary, uh, the BAC program staff have developed a work plan through fiscal year 2025 to address beautification needs within the city. We have several projects and programs that have already been launched or will be launched during fiscal year 2025, and while those beautification programs are being implemented, work is ongoing to prepare for a broadened program focus that includes public art and activations in the future. And an artwork acquisition policy and procedures are being developed based on the recommendations of the public art strategic plans, and these items will be presented to council in the coming months. And thank you for your time today. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions, comments?
Real, real quick, Mayor, I really appreciate the mowing efforts. That is something that I hear, uh, from my constituents about, uh, those TexDOT mowed areas or controlled areas that tend to get out of hand, and we try to remind TexDOT, like, hey, this needs, or just bring it to their attention in those season, in those growing seasons. So, um, I'm grateful, I'm very grateful about, uh, that initiative, kind of supplementing their mowing, because I, I think that often is a first impression type of thing when people come into the community, and just our own residents don't love seeing overgrown public areas like that, so thanks for that. Appreciate the attention, the sculpture garden, the lighting, I think these are a lot of great initiatives to, uh, just help showcase, uh, Waco, both to our own people and to visitors, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo Councilman, uh, Bordero's comments there. Uh, when I, when I first heard about beautification arts and culture, I was thinking, well, how does this fit into our, kind of our burgeoning art scene that we have here in Waco with our music and art and public art and all that, and it's, it's fun to be in Waco right now. And I like how you, it really turns a lot on the organization and the planning, and really the nuts and bolts and blocking and tackling. What do we do? I mean, you've got a list of things we need to be working on, which I love, uh, and the future plans, very well organized, uh, for, for this project, just to be starting out. You've done a great job of getting your arms around it. Um, so good luck in the future, and let us know if there's any way we can help you out. And we look forward to hearing you, hearing from you on those, uh, bridge lights in a couple of months. All right, all right. Sorry, Bradley.
Oh.
You're gonna be visiting us for Christmas, right?
Me and Amanda are gonna be out there with flashlights for you. Don't worry.
We will make it work.
All right, the next item, work session 2024-833.
Yeah, speaking of lights-
Yes.
Let's bring up, uh, Director of Parks and Recreation, Jonathan Cook, to discuss the holiday event season. Tons of things going on with Wonder, Winter Wonderland, as well as downtown lighting, Cameron Park Zoo lights, which is becoming a regular, uh, great addition to the holiday season. And, um, yeah, so Jonathan's gonna preview the 2024 holiday season, and, um, I don't wanna steal his thunder, but so, but I will, a little bit. Last year, the challenge went down that we needed to add a new holiday departmental vehicle, and so I believe there's gonna be one, um, from the police department.
It's true.
You're not gonna show it tonight.
No, no, that's the thing, we're not people behind the curtain, they did this hard at work, though. We've got some other enhancements we're gonna talk about.
But, well, let's tell them, let's tell them what's going on.
Good deal, well, City Manager Ford, Mayor Council, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, only in Texas do we have 100-degree weather today. It'll be a little bit tomorrow, but we're gonna talk about Christmas and the holidays. Uh, it is right around the corner in an exciting time. Um, often tell the story and the transition on, uh, there was a moment around 2012, uh, to where we were doing a transition of event, and at that moment, a little moment of clarity that, uh, Waco goes all-in on the holidays, and, uh, we wanna make it a December to remember for everyone, and those are lasting memories we create during the holidays from all different areas. Uh, we are gonna provide an overview of our annual Waco Wonderland event in downtown and preview our plans, and also going to look at what we're doing and work with City Center Waco, as, uh, they help with the coordination of the downtown lighting display, and then mention the Cameron Park Zoo Wild Lights. We're gonna look at what other departments are doing, uh, including that mobile outreach project that's become so popular, and other events that we have, uh, throughout the city of Waco. Waco Wonderland, uh, it's become quite the Waco tradition, and, uh, over 10 years now, it first started in 2013, uh, when members of the Waco Public Improvement District, number one, City Center Waco staff, um, and multiple departments of City of Waco staff, including council members, came together, and, uh, how do we enhance our tree lighting ceremony, uh, showcase downtown Waco and the merchants, um, and also boost that economic impact of people coming in not only from the region but around the state to attend a holiday event? This is an event, uh, quite large in scale, as you can see on the picture on the left-hand side, uh, but it is funded through the, uh, Public Improvement District, also with the support of community sponsors. While the city of Waco provides that in cat, in-kind staffing support and event organization, uh, it's not only our department, our outdoor events team, but members of Traffic, Waco PD, emergency management, and even volunteers that come out to help us out during the weekend. So a lot of collaboration to produce such a large event. Three-day festival with an estimated weekend attendance is about 25,000. So very large impact, and for a lot of people, this is their time, they come to downtown Waco, they go out to eat, they do some other shopping while they're in town and stay at hotel. Um, and we've averaged through ticket sales in our merchant booth, an additional revenue stream to help fund this event of 80,000 per year. This gives that quick revenue overview, and mention on ticket revenue, uh, pretty steady right now, really solid year last year. Uh, what that equates to is ticket sales for, to ride the snow hill that we bring in, made of almost, uh, you know, real ice on Saturday and Sunday. Then we also have a Ferris wheel attract and a train for the smaller kids. We do an all-you-can-ride wristband, so that's where that ticket revenue comes, and as you can see, pretty steady numbers, um, and we're excited about that. Uh, Friday, obviously busier with the fireworks show. Where we have also seen steady increase, and with some numbers, some increases, is the merchant revenue. Uh, when I say we call it the mistletoe market, and so a lot of our local crafts and different artists will come out, also different businesses, but, uh, of course, my favorite part is the number of food trucks we get. Always working with staff to make sure we've got stuff that'll keep everybody happy, but, uh, we've grown the footprint. Uh, I remember we first started, we had one row of food trucks, now we circle the entire square. So once again, just plays a part of that tradition and showcases not only some local restaurants, but small businesses, give them an opportunity to mingle and interact with the community. As I mentioned, three-day festival, call it three days of cheer, but this year's event will be on December 6th through 8th, located in front of City Hall in the Heritage Square area. Uh, that Friday night, we'll be having our annual tree lighting ceremony and fireworks display, uh, followed up, the holiday parade has become an annual tradition for many years in downtown Waco. So definitely some highlights there, but other activities, I mentioned the mistletoe market, uh, the food trucks. We also keep expanding in the schedule the community entertainment stage, and what that means- And what that means, that's local school groups. it is an in-house produced event and marketing-wise coordination, communications and marketing I love the Friday night performance from the Waco High Jazz Cats, one of my favorite on that video. That will be launching later today as we've organized our official launch, our marketing things, but also different dance groups join us and church choirs throughout the weekend. launch of the events to coordinate with this council presentation. So it's just a rotation of different people coming to support their loved ones and friends So we're excited to announce that Wonderland will be back December 6th through 8th this on stage. Mentioned the Ferris wheel, the snow two hill, very popular, always fun time for the family year. A quick look and just looking at, we talk about visitors that come to downtown, estimated, and to see parents get with their kids and come down that snow hill. And this year, we're also gonna be adding and working with our library staff. these are numbers runoff of different cell phone data here and it shows obviously a They're gonna be doing storytimes in the square and then as always, just mini pictures large concentration around Waco, but it shows it's a really strong regional event. of visit with Santa. I can't believe, my kids started so young, we started this event and now they just double The red area expands out beyond that 30-mile residence and so that's definitely a good up on Santa's lap. sight, 10% from over 50 miles away. But it's great times and those have just played a part of that tradition when you can And even hitting on some out-of-state travelers as well, so we have 400 people from out-of-state have those pictures year in and year out. and it's really interesting where it's become, started as a way to showcase community and Here's a quick preview video that we have. local, but how it's branched out to become a destination holiday event. We have a lot of other events in Waco, but really making Waco a destination for the holiday season. Gonna transfer over to the lights and one thing everybody loves about the holidays is lights. And mentioned City Center Waco and the Public Improvement District, they do coordinate the installation of our downtown holiday light displays, also different elements such as garland and bows on light poles. And then last year, we brought in, last couple of years, different photo opportunities, one at Bridge Street, at Heritage Square to create those Instagram moments and those selfie stations, so we brought in those. I mentioned we have Heritage Square, the trees around Heritage Square and the pergolas have lights on them. We come in and do lighting on six main trees in front of City Hall. We've also expanded and working in adding lights at the Bridge Street Plaza to make that a destination as well and then a large wreath on the side of the convention center. We do have a, our City Center Waco does have a current contract that was established in 2020 with the Charanium's Company. They handle the installation, removal and also bring in those new ideas. We had a conversation with them earlier today as we're making sure that schedule's lined up on saying, okay, what's some surprises that we can make sure and add in this year? That expense of that contract, there's an annual expenditure of around $73,000 per year. It is a final year of this contract and so been great to work with, but as we move forward, we know as Waco grows, we want our holidays and our lights to grow as well, looking at specific opportunities for that. For this year, you'll be seeing these lights go up before Thanksgiving and then we'll also be having the removal that first, second week of January, making sure that those lights come down, working that in the schedule as well. Wild lights at Cameron Park Zoo, perhaps the newest tradition and one that keeps growing and is really something special here. Cameron Park Zoo and the Zoological Society established this as a revenue generation event to showcase the zoo and then also bring in funds to help supplement the funding the society helps out with in regards to educational and interpretive opportunities. Grown to over 3 million lights are on display with 65 stand-up displays. Example, as you see this van on the right that people can crawl in and take pictures with and they also have sort of the long tunnels going over some of the pathways within the zoo's inner loop. It is set to open on various nights throughout the week, starting November 29th, right after Thanksgiving and will go through the end of the year. Last year, they recorded over 15,000 attendees, just some really solid numbers and a great way to make the zoo more of an experience and really capitalize on that agility to create different types of programming. Like with Wonderland, we'll have Santa be coming back for a visit at these events, different food and beverage options. This year, they are bringing in a combination ticket that you can not only get a zoo daytime admission, but then you get your wild lights admission as well. So some good creativity there to capturing that audience. And another special thing and many thanks, also we'll be looking at hosting another for the second year, a city employee appreciation event. Last year, we had more than 1,200 employees and family members came out for that nighttime event and so that's creating another special tradition and we're very appreciative of the work being done by all the zoo staff getting ready for this one. Now, one of the more popular things, and I tell you what, this is an example of something, let's use the snowballs. You know, I remember the fire truck getting decorated the first couple of years, it's owned to something here. And the next thing you know, Solid Waste steps in, now we've got Waco PD stepping in as well. Look, not everyone can make it down to Waco Wonderland, not everyone can maybe make it to Wild Lights, so sometimes you gotta bring the party to the people. So that's what they have done here. So we do have the return of the Holiday Cheer Fire Engine, will be making its rounds around town. Solid Waste has put into the retirement of their famous Grinch Mobile, but never fear, it's gonna be rethemed and the theme of Polar Express will be debuting this year. And then as mentioned, Waco PD and Chief Victorian announced that after they're gonna have a mobile holiday vehicle as well. Now, these vehicles throughout the month, they visit your neighborhood parks, the libraries, schools, but really up and down the streets of Waco. So one of the things that was discovered is making sure that people know, well, where is that truck? You know, sometimes maybe the schedule's a little bit off, but our communication and marketing team have done a great job creating some interactive maps so you can see the schedule of where they'll be, GPS link so you can see when it's coming. That's that additional, the Santa tracker, you know, when you see the weatherman showing us where Santa is, it's a great play off of that. So very appreciative and this is good for the culture of our teams as well. Different departments and employees coming together to work for the greater good and to bring happiness to the community of something a little different from the norm. And so I know a lot of work and I greatly appreciate them adding these and bringing cheer on wheels across Waco.
This is such a beloved tradition already and love seeing the fire trucks come down the street, but Grinch Mobile was kind of a next level creativity. So I'm looking forward to Polar Express. I feel like Solid Waste has shown that it's a big player in this game and I'm looking forward to PD's entry on the scene, too, I think. We're gonna have some fun this year with three different departments stepping up.
Yeah, I heard Cody's working on getting Tom Hanks for the month.
Jonathan, is cheer on wheels gonna be in the parade?
Correct. Yes, they will be. That is the plan right now and an added component and looking at some variations and making sure in the parade this year, as we're working that with staff, making sure the lights and the displays are all on point and extra festive. Because as you can see, when it comes to lights, they're outdoing a lot of people here, but these mobiles will be on display during the parade.
Thank you.
Quick highlight of different city events, talking about the big things, but often it's the small things that matter as well. And a display of that is community centers, libraries, different types of programs and activities for local youth, also libraries that do ornament decorating, gingerbread house decorating. So bringing that creativity and once again, just spreading that cheer throughout the community. Our youth council, Waco Youth Council, will once again be leading their annual holiday toy drive. And then a quick plug for our good friends and colleagues at the Pet Circle Regional Animal Shelter, obviously, it's a great time for some adoptions. They're gonna be joining us at various events, but holiday adoptions is a great time and a great gift to think about. How can you deny that dog over there dressed up? He's just looking at me, won't come home, so. Another component, we want to make sure it's not just about what the city's doing, there are a lot of different community groups and businesses and organizations. This is just a small sample of the calendar. One thing that we do with our Waco Wonderland website and also on the Waco-Texas website is make sure people know different holiday activities around. But a lot of different departments take place, I always like to mention the HEB Feast of Sharing. That's a special event that brings people together. We're looking at a holiday market will be taking place on Bridge Street, a variety of different shows, Baylor's event, Christmas at the Silos. So we're not at no shortage of holiday events and it's good to be out and talking about them and getting to that holiday spirit and we're looking forward to a really solid December this year. So just wanna recap, those downtown lights, they'll be installed here about a month away and start seeing the elves show up for that. Holiday, our Cameron Zoo Wild Lights taking place really the whole month of December, Wonderland on December 6th through 8th with that tree lighting and fireworks kickoff night on the Friday evening. And those decorated vehicles will also be heading out on the roadways the month of December. So with that, preview of the holidays and here to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments, questions?
I'm gonna look forward to the trucks to come through the neighborhood. I did catch the fire truck coming around my neighborhood last year. Although I'm the only one that lives in my house, I was out there, yay! Made a lot of noise, but I look forward to that. And I know my family does, too, and my neighbors do. It was awesome last year, it was awesome. Thanks to fire trucks and the firefighters and now this year, PD, I'm looking forward to see what they put together.
Jonathan, thank you so much for coordinating these holiday efforts that are really interdepartmental and appreciate you being our kind of joyful holiday ambassador here every year with the recaps and all your leadership that you do with these events and the parades and just making it so great. So appreciative to Parks and the Parks team and all the departments that are such great team players and pulling off these wonderful community events.
Councilman Bearfield?
Yeah, Jonathan, thank you so much for everything that you do to make Christmas amazing. I, you know, those busting it down when I was working with City Center, getting everything set up, I mean, it has come so far and I just, even the Santa House has done a whole, as duly noted and apt for Waco, a fixer-upper and has become just amazing from what it was nine years ago. So I congratulate you and the team and the Pid for just continuing to make a joyous holiday season even better for Waco and Wacoans and the folks in the surrounding area. I have heard tell that the Coco Crawl is coming back, so I'm super excited about that because that involves our downtown merchants and getting the folks who are in our downtown area and our heart of downtown, walking around and moving around to patronize not only the folks in the mistletoe market, but our steadfast downtown patrons. So I'm excited to see that again and for that to come back alive. Question, with the, you know, we always do an amazing fireworks show. Is it fireworks this year or are we looking at drones?
So we do have scheduled this year for a fireworks show. There's no doubt, we've had quite a bit of popularity in regards to the drone show and it's something we're looking at for some future events. I'll be honest, it's amazing the value you get for a holiday fireworks show compared to a July 4th show, but as technology progresses, I would just say you're seeing the combo of shows now, drone and fireworks, but we're definitely looking for opportunity for drones, but this will be fireworks only this year.
That's awesome. I know that, I guess, my boys are, so I guess the Border Rouge kids, because my boys are 16 and 18, so I was like, running out of young people to flip the switch, but I guess you got the Border Rouge, the Newlands, still Kennedy, I guess, I guess the man's son is not too cool to throw the switch, so we still, we still working on it, then Councilmember Rodriguez is a grandkid, so I think we'll be all right as far as who's gonna throw the switch.
I'll have my kids up there. Be ready.
Oh, definitely, yeah, we're in.
Awesome. And little Aubrey.
I'll just echo what everybody else says, Jonathan, you bring such great energy to this event and it's infectious and it's really looking forward to the December to remember. It gets bigger, it seems like it gets bigger and better every year. I mean, just that picture right there, I mean, that's real, right? That happens, that's gonna happen in a few months.
No Photoshop there, that's from the stage, so yeah.
It's just a super fun event and you've kind of spread it out with the Waco Wonderland and the fireworks show, the downtown lights, the zoo and the wild lights, it's a whole other thing going on over there and that whole mobile cheer deal is a cool thing. And then as Councilmember Bearfield pointed out, it's about bringing commerce downtown too, so we're gonna have all these people packed in there, they're buying some things at the deal, but they're wandering around downtown at our businesses downtown and buying and eating and shopping and just, it's a fun event for the whole community and I appreciate all the energy you put into it. City Manager Ford, where do you want to go here?
Well, we are headed towards an executive session. Let Galen know he's off the hook today, we'll bring him back at a future council meeting.
Sorry, Galen.
Thanks, Jonathan.
We will now move to requests for scheduling of future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? We see none. We will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:13 PM.
Given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with following provisions, Personnel Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, Discussion of the City Attorney Appointment Process and Review and Discuss Candidates for the City Attorney, Personnel Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, Acting City Attorney Kathleen Perdon, Real Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are, oh, yeah, oh seven, we are now in executive session.